A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you hear us alright Scott?
Can you hear us now?
We don't have a budget any more than do we?
No.
Are we done with that?
Yeah. It's not even on here, we should be voting on the budget.
We can't until the twenty second because we're going to do public publication.
I forgot about that.
Can you hear now Scott?
He just wants to get it over with.
Okay, now can you hear us?
Guys, what I've had seen done in a couple of meetings where we've had use of technologies, somebody calls in on their smartphone and then puts it on speaker, sometimes it can pick up people that are playing this.
I'll turn everything off.
Or you call, no, you can call into the conference line number on the on the public meeting agenda, go to the front, there's a phone number to call in, if you call in and put it on speaker, anything he says you'll hear vice and vice versa, that might work better. It doesn't always, but it's something I've seen how it does.
You don't give a clue on the feedback almost?
No, not if you move the microphone back. Hey Scott, this is Shannon, I figured we'd just call in and use speakerphone, might be easier.
Yeah, it sounds like you guys are all talking with a bough full of harkens.
Okay. Alright, we're good to go now.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second?
Here.
Motion made in second, open favor.
Alright.
Alright.
Do you have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda for May twenty fifth.
I'll second it.
Okay, open favor.
Alright.
Alright, let's move on down to the public comments, candidates may address the council an item on the agenda or not on the agenda, out of respect for the council members in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes, please state your name and address for the record. Did you any public comment? Hearing none. Let's move on down to the department reports, we'll start with Michelle.
Okay. Um, we've got all the lifeguards um hired and we're gonna do lifeguard training the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. I'm gonna have a kickoff meeting for everybody at my place so that they're trained. We're doing um the square. Everything's going through square this year, um, so they'll get a little pass, which is super cute, we've got uh the town lake guy holding on to a beach ball, which is fun, and so they'll come through and uh uh swipe the card and they'll get into the pool. So it's cool about this is that we'll be able to tell you how many people are there on any particular day or month or for the season, um, how many family passes, single passes, all of that, we'll be able to tell more specifically, how our swimming pool is going.
When uh, when uh, the school has bought those passes, will that automatically go on there and reflect that? Or they have to sign up for it or?
They have to come down and get a card, yes, so that they can get into the pool.
Then you, then they just tell you they're from the high school and they get it?
Yeah, we're keeping track of everybody.
Okay, that's just what I was curious.
Yeah, we're taking names and um grades, and so that we can turn it into Mr.
Yeah, because Mr. Carter will need to report that for the grant, you know, at the end of it, that would be one of the requirements, I'm sure, so.
So we will be able to report to Mr. Carter exactly how many students took advantage of the cards and exactly how many times the pool was used by um District Seven students.
Which may enable, as I said, I can't speak to the grant folks, but sometimes that can enable you to get it again, that kind of thing, so there's that's really good data to have for potential future grant opportunities.
Okay, go ahead, Michelle. Um, I'm also getting ready as one of our town goals this year was to do a June um spring cleanup. So I'm gonna have a dumpster brought in and put between the alley and Jeff's gonna bring in some cones and people can come and drop off garbage here. The reason why I'm doing it at town hall is so we can kind of monitor what's going in there instead of sort of spree for all, then we have to pick through it, so, we're gonna put it there. I'm also starting to put together some letters um to help uh encourage some of our um randowers to clean up their properties, we'll see how that goes. Um, and then um, we're doing a lot of cleanup in our utility billing um and we're finding very interesting mistakes, today we found one that was about ten years old and it was a wrong address, so we're um, we're having to resubmit that over to county planning and they're gonna need to renumber the block. Super fun.
Yeah, I wish that we could say that was the first time this ever happened, it's not.
Um uh, I think that's, other than getting ready for the pool to open, the budget getting passed, the square coming online, T net going up there so we have wifi available. And then the audit, we got our audit, super great, um and I sent that out to um all the different people that needed it and I'm working with business origin to get the four hundred thousand dollar loan for anyone wanting to fire.
When they rent the pool, do they get like one lifeguard or two lifeguards or what do they get?
For what?
When they rent the pool for a party?
It depends on how many people they have, if they have up to ten kids, it's one lifeguard, if they have more than ten kids, it's two. Even if it is one over.
I have a question about the card thing, so let's say I have a guest visiting from out of town, I have a card with my account on it, can I just swipe it twice for both of us to get in, or would they need to also buy a card for a one-time pass?
It depends on what kind of pass you bought.
But if, so if I bought a full year pass myself, can I just swipe it twice for them, or would they need to get their own?
They would not, they'd probably get a one-day pass.
Or a one-day pass themselves.
But if you bought a multiple day pass and then, yeah, say you bought a ten-day pass, then I think then you, that's when you would get it.
Then you can maybe swipe it like twice or three, and how many guests you might have, a couple times.
Okay. That it? That's it. Yep.
Well, we uh, we've got quite a bit going on with the swimming pool, it all kind of came together last minute, the roof's done, the repair on the roof, the roofers are done, the electrician is done, the pool is full and nice and warm and clear and the water's all balanced, ready to go, so when they start training, it'll be we still have some cleanup to do from both the roofers and the electrician, but we'll get that done this week. We've been trying to get a contractor down here to do a repair on well eight, the one that had the plugged up perforations in the well lining and there was a death in the contractor, I wanted to use his family, so we've been put off for a little while, it's not gonna pull this up too bad, I just uh give him a couple weeks and try to get him back down here to do the job. Produces the least amount of water as any other wells, but the jealous and iron man can use, so I'm somewhat urgent, but I'm impatient for the situation and we're uh, we bought, remember uh, two years ago or the end of twenty nineteen, we bought a paint dripper and then we never had a chance to use it last year, and we just started using it and it's working great, it's really, it's gonna be amazing, it's uh a lot faster, use a lot less paint, we don't have any overspray going around, it really does a super nice job, real happy with it. Um, we had the auction last weekend, and or the weekend before I guess, and we sold all the items we took over, got a really more than fair price for everything. So the surplus items we took over, that combined with the money we made selling the two trucks we no longer wanted to use, uh, we're about six thousand dollars over what we spent on the two new trucks from ODOT, so we covered, covered that expense and plus put a little bit of money away on that, so. Uh, the four items were about eighteen thousand five hundred dollars for the four things we took. I would've been satisfied with ten to twelve, but I'm real happy with that amount, so. Just uh, Shannon knows we had, had a lot of water leaks lately, he had one cut loose in his yard, uh, maybe we'll have to put a new service in, we've had about done five or so in the last two weeks, first part of the year, yeah. So, uh, pretty much, we still have an issue, uh, my report there mentions it, uh, we still have an issue with geothermal trouble out uh with the DOC. We're waiting on some parts, we can't really move forward and do any more troubleshooting out there until we get a couple parts in our hands. I hope that they're gonna be here tomorrow, so we can get some stuff figured out for them, I know they're getting impatient, which, you know, I'm glad it's summertime, but, but, you know, summertime is short here, so when we get all the issues we have worked out, ready for winter, so. We'll be taking care of that. So pretty much everything's in the report, unless somebody has a specific question.
Street sweeper is working good?
The which?
Street sweeper?
Street sweeper is working the way it always works, I don't know if I would call it working great.
Move on, uh, engineering fire nine one one in last year. So, let's move on to new business. Town ordinance regarding dogs, hopefully you should have that one.
So, we're trying to figure out what to do, um. We've had some complaints about a lot of dogs being on a property and I think what's happening is there's two houses opposite of each other and they're going through the vacant field by the house disrupting the dogs and having them bark. So, it's a kind of a twofold mission of getting the dogs uh, getting the dogs to comply to the ordinance and then perhaps making it a little bit more difficult to get through that vacant property, so it cuts down on the foot traffic. Um, and I'm working with the sheriff's department on how we can do that. Um, we've also contacted Calamit County to see if we might be able to tap into their resources um, to take dogs that are um violent or biting people and take them over to Calamit and have them help us maintain them since we don't have a kennel for them. So I'm just, we're trying to find a better solution, is what we're trying to do. Um, but we haven't come to anything, but we do know there's a problem, so, um.
One headache that's out there is the dog ordinance, the primary dog ordinance is eight forty-four, which was put in two thousand thirteen, and that still presupposes the main person that was enforcing most of that was actually the chief of police and with us going to the sheriff's department, at a minimum, if you're gonna do something, you guys want more, whatever, this ordinance needs to be updated so that the um town police department is replaced by our contracted police service with the uh the county sheriff's department, that would be the quickest fix for doing parts of it. As for a number of dogs, I do believe there's something out there, we're still looking for that particular um ordinance, it may be part of the development code, I suspect it is, because there is some sections, for example, when somebody annexes into town, you notice there's certain areas, like on T Street, several people still have horses, we don't normally allow farm animals inside town limits, but when an annex in their grandfather's head, I think I've seen something there, the county ordinance says four dogs within a half mile, so you're correct, but remember, we are our own municipality, it's a county ordinance, stops at the, stops at the, at our boundaries, that's at, they aren't, they aren't allowed to control what we, with some exceptions, and that's would be, and that's not one of them, but I think our development code has a similar, so I'm gonna look into that, see, that that's a news that we do have some things about kennel licenses and stuff like that as far as, but I didn't have a chance to find that, but that is not, and honestly, that probably should be written into the ordinance related keeping of dogs, to be perfectly blunt, that should be incorporated there too, you really want both aspects, both has a development code, because that could be a use someone could propose at one point, and it probably should be in here, but at a bare minimum, I think we need to update the eight forty-four to allow the sheriff's department to be that person.
Well, we also need to take into account that there are loopholes, which is that um, some households have six dogs, um, when they're only allowed to have four because two of the dogs are owned by the kids, two are owned by the mom, and two are owned by the dad. So, but it's not really specific that per address maybe is what we need to say, I, I don't know, but there's little holes in.
And tha- and that's why the development code, I want to make, because normally development code is the property itself, they're not, they don't, they're not gonna care who's owning what, they're gonna wanna know, but again, I still think, especially, because you don't really wanna go through the full-blown um development code enforcement, you don't have to, that's more for like, somebody's running a puppy mill or got fifty dogs on their property versus there's a three hundred dollar fine, keep doing this, get these animals out of here, you, you don't wanna use a sledgehammer to deal with it.
Isn't it, isn't it just so many dogs per household, I mean, it didn't matter who owns them, if there are six dogs on there, then.
Right, that's how.
But it's, it's not specific, it's not specific.
Correct.
And there's another issue that the county requires that pet owners register their dogs every year, which I thought that once you registered, it was like forever, or if you had them chipped, it was, they're chipped and that's how that goes, but for some reason, the county requires them to do it every year, which is a requirement or something like that, because usually when you get your dogs licensed, one time.
And we had, and we adopted the same rules, if you go to page two of eight forty-four, we have the same, and the clerk, the West County clerk is supposed to be issuing those for us as well.
I just think it's excessive, but that's me and, and it's just a, another um point to take into consideration when we rewrite the ordinance, that there's a couple of loosey-goosey stuff that we can tidy down.
Is that just in there so that they generate more revenue?
Uh, it's making, no, rabies shots, making sure that people.
They know that people come in and pay you a license every year?
No, my understanding is most, most jurisdictions do this because they wanna make sure people keep up the rabies shot, that was the which I don't know how, I don't know if it's a year, I'm not a veterinary expert, but that's what I suspect was the, because again, they're, they're looking for rabies vaccination each time that.
I think we need to have a work set in on ordinance eight forty-four and now.
And I would also suggest, yeah, probably eight forty-four and it should cut it, and the other thing is, you probably ought to adopt the same buying schedule that you adopted on the feeding, you know, the A B, you know, where the first offense is this, you do it again, it keeps escalating like you did with the animal control, with the feeding ordinance.
So, do you remember where that ordinance is or what it was that Sandy told us about, about the horses?
Oh, um.
That was an ordinance, right?
It is, I've seen it, I just am trying to remember where, I'll, I'll do some research.
Oh, that's where I can look, if I can find it, okay. Yeah, I do, I do know that uh, we had a problem with that.
Does that go like chickens and everything?
Yep, chickens, roosters, they can have, people had it, horses, them and thirty women.
Well, there's people that have chickens on my, chickens and roosters, they're affecting, they're weakening everything.
You can have. You can have three chickens and no roosters.
Yep.
Oh, cool.
So, once we get this, I can go and.
This is not, not binary chicken.
Once we get this all straightened out, we'll keep it in the paper and, and uh, on the website or whatever to on some of the items, I'm not saying all of them. Okay, let's move on down.
Are we done with eight forty-four then, we're gonna table it for a work session?
Yeah, we need to, let's.
I got a work session for eight forty-four. And that takes care of A and B.
What day?
Um, how about, how about I email you?
Okay.
Okay.
I E, in terms of people walking through property?
She said we already know.
That's the same one, we already covered it.
We, we got, we're on C now, she's, she locked them together, she's still on the agenda, but she locked them together.
Okay.
I'm expediting then, so.
Alright, so we can go to C?
You can go to C now, yes.
Yes, please.
Discussion of county plan or not, contacting town regarding foreclosure property, why is that? Why, it shouldn't be just.
I don't know, that's why I put it on there.
If you've got foreclosed properties, we don't know, we keep sending them bills.
So, they're being sold with uh, sometimes very large water bills and the properties are full of garbage, they're not being cleared off. And I don't know what.
They're sold as is, right?
Well, they still need to let them know there's a water bill.
Well, I know, but when you go over to the county or the, to get your house paid for, you know, over here, they do a search and if there's people that have outstanding bills, they have to be paid before you buy the house, right?
Yeah, they search, but they don't call from the places.
Well, they should.
Like, the county.
Well, every time I bought a house, I always.
Right, but you didn't buy foreclosure. Yeah, the title company, the title company will not ensure, there was some, the title company will not ensure for ten years a property that's bought out of foreclosure, I get hired all the time, that assumes quite title action to foreclose or whatever, because they don't feel, and nothing wrong with the county process, just a title company got burned a couple of years ago, so there is not, you, you buy it as is, basically with a quitclaim deed, which basically means if the county has any interest in it at all, you get whatever they have, there's no real warranty of title or anything like that.
But here's the issue, they're not telling them, and then they come in here and get a big surprise, hey, you got a four thousand dollar water bill, you get to pay that too.
But then you, they're, they get the information on that, I mean, that's, that's on the people, we're not doing the due diligence.
Like I buy those veterans, I bought two veterans' houses and like Shannon says, it always says due diligence is required, in other words, you have to.
Okay, we'll tell them.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I don't know how it works.
No, no.
What might be, what might be a way of dealing with that, for example, they, they, if you guys look at, if you guys look in the newspaper, in some of those foreclosure notices, you know they have that station, this, this house may have been used as a me, as an illegal drug manufacturing site, maybe you talk to the county and get them to put a disclosure, if this, if this thing is within town limits, then you need to go check with the town of Lakeview about any outstanding utility bills on it. But if they weren't doing it, but, but if they put a warning in there, then it's on them. That would be, so maybe you could see it during their tax sale, they, they just read that out, you're just part of their script.
Part of the people noticing.
Exactly, something like that, so it's just what's out there, that, that way they've covered themselves, it's not a huge onerous thing for them and because the water bills and sewer bills do follow the property, that's what our court is set up, so.
We're just thinking about that, it's like, when the bills, three or four grand, the, the meters pulled off, right, or whatever it is we're doing now.
But it's just, it's just past bills from people that quit paying and then it goes, you, you could send it to collections, but it's not gonna do us any good because those people foreclosed on everything, or they're not even here. Mm-hmm, because the families just let everything go.
The water is usually just turned off.
No, but I mean, when somebody else buys it, don't they have to pay it, don't they have to pay it, get everything turned on?
And that's what the fault misses, if there's a backwater bill for like five years or something.
People just aren't paying, or buying.
And that, that keeps accruing, if it follows the property, doesn't follow the person, so.
Yeah.
That's why if you buy property, you should check, see what's on it.
And I can tell you, the title company does a really good job of telling people to do that now, Maritile, I know that.
The Maritile does, yeah.
Maritile does, when they're doing these closings, they actually tell people right up front, you better go talk to, and a lot of deals that I've worked, we specifically work in, so-and-so, you know, selling it, it's gotta bring a water bill, correct?
Well, that's what I was saying, they've done that to me on houses I've bought.
Yeah, Maritile's great about it.
So it sounds like you just need to talk to the planner, that's important, you're gonna have to.
Awesome, I'll send a little blip over and ask if they can do that. Thank, thank you.
You guys got any stuff on that? Okay, we move on, opening of the town, twenty four, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Um, on the pool stuff, Annette had some questions regarding the swimming pool.
Sure.
For swim team, straight up there.
Right, yes, I just wanna know if we are still able to do our practices before this opens on June eighteenth.
They have lifeguards.
That'll be up to somebody besides me, I just take care of maintenance, that'll be.
At least we have a swim meet that starts on the nineteenth, our first swim meet is the nineteenth in um Prinville. And so, we would like to at least have a week of practice before we go compete. Prinville's been in their pool since May seventeenth. FYI, FYI, Jeff.
What do you have in mind, to start?
Um, well, I mean, I asked for the times of um seven to ten in the morning, which.
But I mean, uh, what date would you like it to start?
Like the fourteenth?
Mon- Monday the fourteenth.
Okay.
Monday the fourteenth, which we're gonna share the pool with her on Monday.
I don't see any issue, I don't, I don't either.
I mean, we'd love to be, right now, going up there and jumping in, like those adults.
Yeah, there's just some cleaning, the cleanup and stuff that needs to be done before this is safe, I mean, there's still some cleanup to be done.
What, what needs to be cleaned up?
Well, we need the whole place swept and washed out and, so, then I cleaned up after the electrician, there bits of wire and stuff around.
Okay, what, uh.
And you wanted to pressure wash the decks and whatnot, uh.
Yeah, I think we'll Sunday clean while they're training too, I can go up tomorrow and do that.
Well, I just thought it would be good for the lifeguards that wanna start anyway, you have some, I mean, there would have to be lifeguard trains to go up and do it.
They have, she has a couple that are just graduated that are willing to go help and then we have one that is fully trained that can go help as well.
Do you wanna go up there tomorrow?
Get the swim team up there.
Clean it up tomorrow, you guys can go. Yeah, I mean, yeah, it just don't.
Get them on a school, we're watching movies.
That's what the substitute teachers do.
I do, I did show up movies today, I thought it's cool, the rest I've worked on, show up movies.
So. So, the only thing, I guess, so, I mean, because these guys would be in the evenings and I got my stuff up, that's not a problem.
Um, yeah, that was where I ran into training.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
School, same, right?
I can go up there for a couple hours tomorrow and start, um. And then.
Sunday I can go clean.
Sunday Dawn can go, and kids can meet her up on Sunday if you want.
Yep, well, they're training on Sunday, but me and Quincy can go clean. Yep. Well, they're training on Sunday, but me and Quincy can go clean. That won't be a problem. So. She's gonna be gone.
What time are you guys gonna be up there Sunday?
I'll be up there nine AM.
I was gonna say, I, I don't know, maybe I could get some guys from the Knights of Columbus or somebody to go up there and help. Joe Rosales, maybe you could get some, some club guy, you know.
Oh, no, no, no.
You know, maybe we can get it all done.
Okay. I mean, I can throw it out to parents too, about even Saturday or something.
When's the last day of school?
Friday, November eleventh.
If we can get a bunch up there even on Saturday, I could get it done.
Saturday.
I could do Saturday too, no?
Saturday.
Two, that's two guys.
Monday, Saturday.
Do you have anybody do Saturday?
We, we have a softball tournament.
I'm good with Saturday.
Some of us, and it's the damn all time live.
Well, that's what we're happy about.
I have a group text with the um lifeguards that they are available Saturday to come help me.
That'd be good. Saturday at what time?
Yeah.
Nine o'clock, yeah.
That sounds great to me.
Nine.
Okay, so, so just ask for your parents and then they'll let you know. For Saturday or Sunday or whatever.
Sunday.
Saturday.
Oh, they changed this to Saturday. Saturday, Saturday, nine AM.
So with that, with that modification at all, but hopefully getting all done that weekend, what date would you like to open that? What would your request be with the council? My schedule.
No, I, I just only want the swim team, I'm sorry.
No, 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 as far, I'm talking about for the swim team. You wanted that.
Uh, I think Monday the fourteenth would be a great, I mean, that's, I guess that's what we were.
I don't mind being called making on with the fourteenth for the swim team and I can.
No. I'm giving that.
But we need to get our own, we need to just make sure we have uh lifeguards.
That's on the agenda. You guys might wanna do that with a little, just approving their use of it to on the fourteenth there.
I'll make a motion to approve the use of the swim team in the school starting on the fourteenth.
Okay.
I think that.
Want you to play one second, some favor, five.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you. Okay, so then I will just check and see what time we can do it now if we have to have
Well, and I'll have, I'll see if I can get one for you on Saturday. I'll call Sadie and ask her. That won't be a problem.
Yeah, I just have to see.
And then we can see if uh.
What kids will go up there and use that?
Yeah, cause I have Sammy, she's certified too, but I'm gonna see if she can um.
What's your line?
Monday? No.
Saturday.
Oh, Saturday? Oh, maybe. I don't know. I'll find out.
So let me, let me contact them and see what anybody's availability, because then if we are to have our our certified lifeguards, it might not be tall, you know, or maybe. Unless you have somebody who could do it.
Well, Sadie's not doing the training.
Okay.
But she's on Monday, so that kinda stinks.
She's just showing her vibe.
But Sammy should, I think Sammy's still certified.
She's gonna be my pressure washer.
This was my two only returning guards.
We have.
I'll figure that out and I'll let you know.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, and I'll ask them.
Mine's very dear.
Okay.
And there are the dump trucks and.
And the dumpsters taken care of.
So the dumpster, is there any place that like yard where you could be taken? I'm thinking the best spot up are the sewer ponds that um would be a good place for people. I mean, we have to have something to monitor it, but you know, tree limbs, branches, that kinda stuff.
Same thing.
When, when we do that, it, it gets people started going there all the time. And um it has to be, pretty soon we got refrigerators out there in Seattle, it's a tough spot to offer to people because it gets abused.
But isn't there a gate across here or is there?
There's a gate there, yeah.
That doesn't stop people in the past, like we're trolling.
Yeah, it, it, you know, we'll open the gate, go in, go come out to do something, come back and there's a washing machine there.
Could they like, if we put a deal on the paper, like, like put a coupon in there or something and they cut it out, they take it to the dump and at least you know how many people go through it. They get it free if it's just yard debris. No laugh at that.
Oh.
I'm working on a, on a thing too.
We, we would approach the county on that and they, they have said no because it puts, it overburdens the county because everybody goes at the same time. And then there's a line and then it's all messed up. So, I.
I don't think line is bad too, but.
Guys, one thing that's been done in the past is some, is bringing in a chipper. Like a large, some outfit to do a chip so that the yard debris is getting, and then it's a lot easier to deal with the.
He's got a chipper.
Nope.
Sold it. The murmur.
Yeah, I used to run.
But that's been, that's what some communities do, just you don't have that issue. So you're, you're just dealing with sawdust instead of it might be an idea for a future one or something like that, like a yard waste day where we bring a chipper. Sometimes they, there's, some of them have actually done it through like a fire prevention council branch or something like that, where you're doing it to try to get stuff down so that you're not um for fuel blow or something like that. You may be able to get some funding to do some, create something like that in. That might be a way of doing it as far as.
Yeah, that's the only other way to do it, is put two dumpsters up here, one for yard debris and one for.
Right.
For. And then metal.
What about our dump truck? Can't we use that?
So hard to get anything up into it.
I'm talking for garbage?
Yeah.
And then, okay.
I mean, they're hard to get anything up into a dump truck. Eighteen bucks a gallon to get over the edge of it.
Well, that's cool. We just throw it up in there.
People need to learn to throw them.
That's saying. I, I don't know what the best solution is. This is a hapt, path solution, which is better than nothing. I just don't know how to coordinate or strategically think about the other part. Or giving passes, because we could put a pass insert into utility pay bills as a one-time voucher through. Um, but it's just, it overburdens the, the dump.
So I know in the past that everyone, I guess I've had a pool over there collecting paint to do that. Um, are we gonna do anything like that or something?
I would, I count it, the counting yards, they've been up to here, the paint recycling.
And last, what was it, two years ago, when, before COVID, they did a, they did a one project, it was like my hand paint, like clear, same pattern.
With the dump.
Yeah. Actually, I don't even think it was the dump. I think it was in town. It was in.
Right, when the dump did off, apparently they did an uh over at the town parking, they did a one project.
Yeah.
They did that once and then they did another one, I think over by Lipentation once too.
Down at the county lot.
Yeah, it was county, yeah, exactly. It's county lot.
So they dropped their cans of paint and then the dump can you pick it up or we put it in?
No, no, they can't go in the dump. There's special handling.
They take, they take that and dump all the whites kinda in one thing and they recycle it and boil it again and you can buy it for like that's what we painted a hospital with, was recycled paint. For like ten bucks a gallon.
Yeah, they're, they actually hire a company that comes in and they.
Oh, like a company comes to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then.
And then another company comes to do it.
They open it.
Do the recycling, yeah.
They open the cans and recycle all that paint.
Yep. And they even did it with pesticides and chemicals one year too, from what I remember. All that type of stuff they kinda did where instead of the can going to the dump normally, it's been really successful, because they got rid of a whole bunch of.
Mm-hmm.
But the e-cycling thing was kinda nice too, because that stuff gets really screwy as far as, but there's come, what with some of the precious minerals going up, that might be an option. You know, they did a, about fifteen years ago, they did a metal cleanup deal where they take cars and all sorts of stuff. They had a solid person.
Ford Foundation.
Yeah.
Yep.
That was huge. It was, yeah, a big trend.
Quite a bit of a lot of stuff on the whole camp.
All the old dirty cars and everything. Yeah, it might be good to look at that again, because you're about to do. And that's really, that's really the only affordable way to do it, is bringing a portable crusher for that kinda stuff and it ha- it almost has to be funded that way, because the price of scrap hasn't been very good. Although I think back then, there was that cashmere clunker, something came to it up, that's, yeah. Ford family, definitely somebody to talk to about stuff like that.
Okay, so we're just, we're just in one dumpster out here and monitoring.
And then I'll, I'll check into the other to see if I can do uh the number thing for the month of June.
Okay, we need to. Yeah, we need to also put notice out that um no yard debris and no metal. I guess.
We'll just have to tell them to come to town hall before they dump. So we're gonna monitor what's dumped here and.
It'll be out there, it'll be out there for how many days?
Um, for.
Fill us full.
And then I'll have them come give it.
Yeah. It'll be, it'll show up out there on the fifteenth, it'll be there until school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if it fills up super fast, we'll have them dump it and bring it back.
Bring it back, yeah.
Cause the month of June is cleanup day.
Yeah.
Cleanup month.
I mean, if I were a dump pile out there, if there's some way we could you know, we can just keep locked up for the next month after we had you know, we could, we could allow people to dump out there. Yard debris is a big deal.
See, most towns, most towns I've been, lived in, they have a spot where you dump uh branches, grass, leaves. You know, like corvallis, that's awesome. You know, um, you, you dump it by the park and they scoop it all up and take it away.
They run it through a chipper and corvallis and they have a magnet that takes all the nails out of it. The only thing they don't take is pressure treated wood. They're, you know, it's just made of compost.
Yeah.
We could have the volunteer.
I see him.
It's, it's a burn to burn.
When I did the parks, they, we got a grant for uh the wood chipper, that big wood chipper. And for ten bucks an hour, I go around to people's yards when they recall and chip it up.
I love that.
Well, I didn't, but. But that's what, that's what happened. You know, and you have people separating their apple and their cherry to smoke. So, you know, but I was busy doing that.
Yeah, that, that chipper got to be pretty labor intensive. It.
It was, yeah.
Burned out a lot of belts and.
Yeah.
Had to be sharpened all the time and it was.
Yeah.
Easier to take care of the stuff by burning it than it was to.
Yeah.
By fire.
So could we do out by the, the ponds? Have people take their yard waste and then have the Lakeview volunteer firefighters do a burn?
We, we pile it up and burn it at least once a year anyway. You know, we have our little truck that we take out there, so I mean, if they wanted to, they sure could.
I was just thinking for training purposes for the new panel. It's a good.
Hey, we have the the second dumpster, take, take that dumpster out there and dump it when it's all being one one pile instead of scattered all over.
See, I think you'd get rid of a lot of stuff, if you gotta place the dump trees, I mean, tree limbs and that kinda thing. I think that would.
Right, it's just, we just, we just let people dump the Christmas trees there one year. And so that was fine. They dumped all their Christmas trees there. And the next week, there was, you know, everything there. It was, it was just ended up being a garbage dump.
Refrigerators, yeah. Right.
We ended up having to scoop it all up all the way, lock the place up.
Right. Well, that's what Sam did at the batch plant. He had to, people were dumping everything out.
Yeah.
Okay. So do you want me to have people trap? Or do you want me to just do the, the dump bin?
What if we put another dumpster at the town parking lot for yard debris?
Great. I'll do that.
One here, one here for garbage, one over there for yard debris.
Perfect.
And then, big unit silencers, yard debris only, and we let Kevin dump it on us. So, you know, he'd be the only person going out there and he would probably do that for free. You know, just run it out there.
Okay, I don't know. Let the doctor and we'll find out.
Yeah.
So we'll get two.
If not, it would be minimal compared to dump trees.
We'll get two dumpsters. One here in front of town hall for garbage and stuff. And one at the town
Park here.
or parking lot for yard debris.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Those banners don't cost a whole bunch, do they? Like, if you have a banner that said yard debris only. Like, what's his name, could make it over here?
Yeah, we could reuse them every year.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sure, I'll, I'll get them, I'll get them made.
You know, uh.
There are.
Benders.
Benders.
Yard debris only and then whatever the hell it is, metal and.
Big garbage.
Garbage, could just garbage, yeah.
Houseful.
Yeah, it's gotta be household garbage because.
Household garbage.
Because if you guys get any of the um, if you guys get any of the lions ran into that, you can't have any um like appliances or e-waste for that or necessarily for the house.
Okay. Solution, yay, we did it.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I like it.
Me too.
Um. So, oh, Annette, think that the council have anything?
You have anything, Scott?
Do you wait?
No, or yes, I'm waiting. I can hear you now, I know you're.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at uh six forty-five.